Good evening. I'm gonna call this meeting of the North Andover School Committee for May 4th, 2017 to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd invite people to stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'll remind everyone that the meeting's been recorded, so if people could silence their mobile devices, that'd be great. Okay, first order of business is public comment. Seeing none. Uh, next one is recognition, none tonight. Student report, Courtney emailed me and apologized she could not make it tonight, and she believes Cole is studying for an AP exam, so... That's his story and he's sticking to it. Okay. First item, consent agenda, approval of minutes. Ms. Gary did a great job, as usual, with the minutes. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or changes to the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as listed.
Motion made by Ms. Mabley, seconded by Ms. Lynch to approve the minutes as they're presented in the packet. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed no. The ayes have it. Okay. No chairs report tonight. Madam Superintendent, anything on your part?
Yeah, I just thought I would turn my time over to Ms. Mabley and Ms. Picard, who have been at the meetings to talk about the K. Just a quick little update for you guys about how it's going, so if it's alright with you, I was gonna... That's okay. If it's alright with you, I was gonna... They've been attending, and I thought it'd be great to have a school committee member talk about what it's been like.
Oh, so I've gone to four of them, I think. One at the library, two at Atkinson School, and one at the youth center. They've been attended, all of them were attended, some with more than others. People were positive about the experience. They asked good questions. Dr. Price did a wonderful job explaining that it's, yes, it's about kindergarteners, but it's really about all elementary school students. So it was very positive. I don't have anything concerned about it at all.
Amy?
I would totally agree. I've been to almost all of them, and I'm just grateful that people are coming out and asking their questions and listening to the presentation, and it seems like people are very supportive, and so the next step is really to make sure everybody comes out to town meeting to support our various articles.
And there's one more on Wednesday of next week. That's Millet Farm at 10 o'clock.
It's the last one, so hopefully folks, if anyone has any questions. I will say that the current plan for town meeting, as you know, when we met about the motion, is to have the town manager introduce the CIP as a full, complete project, and actually not to spend a huge amount of time having him even talk... He's gonna be the one talking about the kindergarten. So our hope is that these meetings have done enough, have put enough information out there that people will feel like they've gotten their questions answered. Of course, I will be ready to answer any questions from the floor of town meeting, but we're not planning a massive presentation at town meeting about this, because I think we've been talking about it for a long time.
Well, the frequently asked questions that you've done, you've been adding to those, and pretty much... I feel like every meeting I've been to, the same cadre of questions have been asked, those have been added to that, and so we just kind of go further on that. So I think you've got it all locked down as to what the greatest concerns have been.
And next Wednesday at Millet Farm, whereabouts? Will we be in the barn outside, or do we know yet?
I don't know yet.
More importantly, will cider donuts be served?
If there are no cider donuts, I have told them I'm not going.
Okay, good. That's good. Right, cider donuts.
Yes. Cider donut, I mean, it's, you know, worth coming out for those, in my opinion.
And it's been a good cross-section of the community, too. I mean, there's families whose kids haven't entered school yet, family whose kids are, you know, quite a ways through our system, and, you know, people who are, you know, not even connected to the schools, per se. So it's really been a good cross-section, I think.
Yeah, and it's been lively discussions. You know, this is obviously an important decision for this community. So I do really appreciate the group that came to us in January and basically said we need more conversation, and then we reacted with these 10 meetings. So I think it's been a good give and take throughout the whole thing.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and it's also really wonderful to have some school committee members there, because they do ask some questions that merge into places that it's, as the, you know, hired official here, it gets a little tricky for me to answer.
Excellent. Thanks for detaining both, Helen. Amy there?
My pleasure.
Okay. Anything else on your report?
No, anything from my assistant superintendents. I will say, actually, one thing. Dr. Straight, we're gonna be sending a letter out tomorrow, so you might wanna just quickly let the school committee know about that. We'll send you a copy of it.
Certainly. So the letter centers on the show Thirteen Reasons Why, which is a Netflix series that a lot of students have been watching. And it really deals with a lot of very difficult topics, including suicide of children. So what we thought we would do was send, compose a letter, one for staff members, so that they know what to do if students come to them and have questions, or, you know, who they should send the students to, because we don't want all of the staff members answering questions or going into those types of discussions. We prefer that they go to their guidance councils, or an administrator, or somebody who has a background in the counseling area. And secondly, what we're doing is sending a letter out to parents as well of secondary students, just making sure they know about this series, and they understand the significance of what's being discussed in the series, and providing them with some pointers also, where they can go and reach out for some assistance and help in working with their children through these difficult topics that they have.
That's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We just feel like, you know, for a parent who may not be in tune with this, lots of kids are talking about it, so we just wanna provide support to parents and to staff. So the letter will be coming from Dr. Straight, Mr. Nugent, and Ms. O'Leary, so...
Great.
So that's going just to the high school parents?
Middle and high school.
Middle and high school.
Yes. Yeah, because we know with today's technology, I mean, the kids can be watching it anywhere on their phones, you know.
It's on the news quite a bit, too.
It's on the news, so we just wanna make parents aware.
Pardon me?
It says in the front page of the Sunday Globe, if I recall correctly, as well as the front page of today's Tribune.
But I've seen a ton of them.
Dr. Straight was interviewed for the Tribune, please.
Yeah, thank you.
So anyways, it'll be coming from those guys. It'll be going out tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. Second reading, approval overnight trip to Jackson, Wyoming, Yellowstone National Park. I think we discussed this extensively last week. Were there any more concerns or questions or comments?
I will let you know that the second chaperone is going to be a nurse.
That's great. Actually, is that something, it might be something, I don't know if it's on this form or your later form, to have a box, like whether or not a nurse should... Okay.
It's on my later form, that all of the trips, once they're 30 days out, have to be approved by Cheryl Barzak.
Great.
That's good. Any other questions regarding that? I didn't entertain a motion? Anyone?
I move to accept the... Approve the summer trip to Jackson, Wyoming, Yellowstone National Park for the summer.
Motion by Ms. Mabley? Seconded by Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion?
I'm just a little jealous. I'd like to go.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Glad I didn't hear you. So it's three, zero, one.
I hope your kid enjoys the trip.
Me, too.
All right, Ms. Picard abstains. Okay, good. Okay, next order under old business. Second reading vote, school choice participation for 2017-2018 school year. Last week, we had our public hearing on that. I think there was a little bit of background on it. I don't know if anyone needs to hear anything else on that issue?
Just that we recommend that we do not participate as a receiving district in the school choice program for next year. That's our recommendation.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to follow the recommendation that Dr. Price just listed.
So you move that the committee vote not to participate as a receiving district?
Not to participate in the receiving district in the Commonwealth's school choice program for the 2017-18 school year.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Mabley?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Picard. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Four, zero as well. Moving along, second reading, approval of FY '18 budget reallocation for elementary classroom teacher. Again, I think this is our third meeting discussing this. I think we all agreed it was a very creative way to, again, address the class size, the elementary class size problem we have, and...
Yeah, I would just say that, as we discussed last week, I did send you the letter that Mr. Clark sent out about the one, two, and parents have had the option to opt out. As of yesterday, he had plenty of students to still choose from, from both classes, so...
That was gonna be my question.
He is confident that he will be able to fill that class, and we're excited about seeing how this goes in North Andover as a possible future approach to really tackling the class size issue. But we have, as of yesterday, we had no concerns that we would not have plenty of students to choose from for the class.
I just had one question to make sure I understood it, which is, so it's a first, second grade class. So in year one, it's a first and second grade kid, but if your kid's a second grader, in year two, they're gone, and then... So it's really the first grade kids that would have a two-year experience. Is that right?
Although, there is, what is happening is there's actually a first grade teacher who is going to be teaching it. So some students who have her this year will have a two-year loop with her.
Nice, okay.
And I will tell you that very few students in her current class have said that they aren't interested in staying.
I do know that Thompson, a couple of times over the years, have looped up because of going from two to three with a bubble, and so a couple of teachers have done that looping before, and I think it's always been well-received.
So there's a good chance that the class will have some kids who had her last year.
Thank you.
Have there been any other input from parents about, not just that issue, not just the Franklin solution, but is this flexible? That's the question I've, I mean, obviously, you talk to parents at T-ball games, soccer ball, soccer games. Are these the classrooms that are locked in? If, you know, say, we get three or four students that enroll next year, could these teachers possibly move to other, if there are larger class sizes elsewhere? That's the question that I'm getting.
Stay there, you can do that.
Well, I'm just saying, if, for example, you had, you know, five new fourth graders enroll at Tom's, that's probably not a good example. But, you know, if you got a bigger class next August, September, when enrollments come in, when people enroll, would you be, would you then think about moving these teachers to other, larger classes?
Instead of where you have them right now?
Instead of where you have them right now? Oh, can you do that? I mean, I...
Well, yeah, I mean, so two ways that we handle that, and I'll turn over to Mr. Gilligan. First of all, is by opening up these additional classrooms. We're opening up a fifth, a fourth, and a third, and we're being creative about a one, two. So what we are doing is, if students arrive, as we are long-standing practice, is there's no guarantee you're going to your neighborhood school. So by opening up space in third, fourth, and fifth, fourth has been a real juggernaut for us this year, as you know, so we're opening up two, fours, we will have the ability to put kids in classes that aren't as large. If, all of a sudden, I think the only very viable option is if we get a ton more K kids than we anticipate, we would be able to shift one of these to K. Yes, we could do that, and as, probably around August 15th after that, it just gets very hard to do, because you have to hire the teacher. But that would mean we would not be doing something else, so it gets really hard. However, I think the only place I would foresee is if K, all of a sudden, got huge. But if you look at our K numbers, they are low right now, so we're hoping that even with additional enrollments, we'll be okay. You just did out a neighborhood with the principal, so you know this really well.
Yeah, it's one of those things. I think typically, we're in really good shape this time of year, even early into the summer. It's the late August, early September move-ins, and October, November, December, where we hit some pressure points sometimes, and you're not guaranteed to go to your neighborhood school. But we work really hard, and, you know, typically, the one that has the most fluctuation is the kindergarten occasionally. If we open up a kindergarten building, that's not gonna be a problem anymore, so one more year of it. But sometimes, a kindergartner that enrolls in the summertime would go to the school. We usually have one class or so that's overflowed, because we have the space. You know, at this time, Thompson, I'm confident that enrollment will pick up. It always does, but it also has space to take on other students if we ever came to the cap and filled up in schools.
So it's safe to tell parents that we're tackling these classrooms, because the projected ones we have right now, this is where the need is greatest?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And by adding the classrooms with new kids coming in, it does free up a bunch of classes that we can put them into that are not so full.
Do we have kids right now?
Just a last question. Do we have kids now that do not go to their neighborhood schools, because decisions were made that the class sizes were too big?
That's twofold. On one side, kids where classes were too big and were sent to other schools. That certainly has happened. And on the flip side, which is a much higher number, is kids have requested to go to a different school.
Or no school at all?
No. Other schools in North Andover.
Jack had that this morning.
The number's much higher for the kids who do request out of neighborhood, because the babysitter lives near there, or the mom drives by in the morning. Those numbers are much higher than anyone that has to be assigned to another school that's real full.
Interesting.
Yeah. Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay. So at this time, I'd accept the motion, the recommended action here.
So I move to approve the addition of an elementary classroom teacher for fiscal year '18, to be funded by transferring five, whatever the money is, transferring money from the school allocations to fund the position.
Fifty-five thousand and five dollars.
Yeah.
And five dollars. Okay. Motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Ms. Mabley, two. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four, oh, as well. Thank you, Mr. Gilligan, Dr. Price. Okay, now we get into our policies that we talked about last week. And again, I want to commend the vice chair for the work she's done on this, as well as thank Attorney Egan for the time and effort and thoroughness of their deliberations. Do you take these individually, or do we have further questions on these four that we're gonna approve tonight?
I believe these were the four that really had no changes
Yes, right.
from the last time.
Except for the security cameras where Attorney Egan submitted the viewing request information, which would be consistent with the bus policy.
That's right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
And that is now incorporated into ECAF, as presented in the packet, yes?
Correct. And just to be very clear, this is for somebody viewing who is not a designee of mine to view it. So this, it creates other layers for if a parent or a community member, a newspaper, wants to see it. It's not if an assistant superintendent needs to be able to see something that happened quickly, or, sorry, an assistant principal, not an assistant superintendent.
Any questions at all? I would, I think we could do this as one fell swoop. I'd accept a motion to accept all four of these policies as presented in the packet.
I move that the committee approve as presented the revisions to the North Andover School Committee. Policy manual, all four.
E, B, C.
ECAF, JLCD, and FB.
Okay, motion by Ms. Lynch?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Picard. And for the discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye for nothing as well. Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I would say that Attorney Egan's ready to come back and speak about the other policies whenever you would like her to do it. So just let her know.
Maybe on the 18th.
Just, yeah, she's ready if you need her.
On the 18th of May?
Yes.
At the high school?
That's the 16th of May.
Ah, okay.
We'll figure it out.
It's like, ooh.
But just so you know.
Yeah.
Okay. For the discussion of educate a Hall of Fame criteria, I think there's a few things we had left up in the air last time.
Right, so you have in front of you the version that strikes out all the markups. It's easier to read. To summarize, everything that we talked about last time is in here. Two things to note. One is, under selection process, the first sentence, actually, two things. One is where it says, "Subcommittee," that really needs to be changed to "Selection Committee" throughout, which I will do. And then, secondly, you'll see, we did not talk about this, "A Subcommittee of Five Shall Form in June." And the reason why we're saying "in June" is because I noticed, as did Ms. Vinsky Lynch, that we have a new vice chair in June. So if we started something in April, and you'd be in the middle of the process, you'd have to change up the members. It's kinda crazy. So I propose that while people can start submitting their nominees in April, the committee would not form until June.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Is that all right with everyone?
That makes a lot of sense. Usually, the first or second meeting in June, we shuffle the deck.
Right, and then after that, we go ahead, and so whoever's vice chair would appoint or work to get the second school committee member on the committee, as well as a school administrator and a member of the community, and also reach out to the Teachers Association for the fifth member. Okay? And then, is that right? Okay, then the only other, I thought you were gonna say something. The only other thing to note is, I did talk with Mr. McDevitt, or through email, because he's traveling, and he knows we're not voting today, but he commented, and this is in the part right under the nomination packet, so the third paragraph down, under the selection process, where it says, or shall say, "The selection committee will review nomination packets, if any, and select no more than three award recipients per year." Mr. McDevitt struggles with this a little bit. He said, because, you know, you play that out, you get three a year, all of a sudden, in three years, you have nine people you've added. He feels that's a lot, quickly, a lot of people being inducted. So was interested in maybe proposing that add no more than five recipients in a three-year period.
Where are you looking at? I'm sorry, where?
Third paragraph, on the front.
Top paragraph.
Back page.
Back page, top paragraph.
I'm sorry, I have a... That's because I printed out the non-noted, yeah.
Top paragraph, right there.
No more than three.
Yeah.
The only reason I'd have an issue with that, first, all, but to the members first.
That's what Mr. McDevitt expressed, so I wanted to share that, since he's not here.
Well, you know, I've seen this turnover on this board every single year, and rephrase what he wanted.
So rather than having to say, "No more than three award recipients per year," he's worried that, all of a sudden, three years later, you have nine recipients.
Right.
If we maxed out each year, he would feel more comfortable if it said, "No more than five recipients in a given three-year period." I think, again, because he's trying to preserve the prestige of the award. I don't wanna speak for him, but that was what he's expressed to us before, right?
In the email this morning that we received,
Yeah.
he used that as an example.
Right.
I'm not sure he was set on the number four.
No, but he was saying, imagine that happened.
He just used that as an example.
I can understand the intent behind it, but I do worry about binding the hands of a future school committee by having that kind of arbitrary number. You know, if you did three, then two, and then the next year, you know, you're on the board, you can't do anyone. I don't know. I don't think I'd be very comfortable with that.
That is a good point, yeah.
I wouldn't feel comfortable with doing that.
Well, would be, would be interested in changing it from "no more than three per year" to "no more than two per year," because then in a three-year period, you're gonna have six, which is, you know, significantly less than nine.
I'm more comfortable with that suggestion than the other one. Did you tell Mr. McDevitt that we were not gonna vote on him?
I did. He knows that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to mention that, so we could think about it a little bit, and hopefully vote the next time, and he can talk further about it. I personally am indifferent. I don't mind having a lot of people, but I do understand the point of view of keeping it fancy.
How many classrooms are there? There's plenty of classrooms, like...
We have over 300 teachers.
So there's 90 elementary school classrooms, and I would say probably about 100, 200 classrooms?
At least.
Okay, so if we got nine every three years, we still have a lot of time to...
I think we've inducted eight. I think the school committee's inducted eight so far.
And when did it start?
Like, five years ago, right?
Eight years ago. Right, it's one a year.
Except for that first part, where it said you could have no more than three for the first two years.
No, I mean, in the old policy.
Right.
Except one year, they did two, so the next year, they didn't do one.
Anybody, right.
Oh, so there's that, five, two.
I think coming with an arbitrary number like that is, we have a lot of great teachers, and a lot of people want to be nominated, so, you know... Again, I'm more comfortable with Ms. Picard's suggestion than the other one, but... Is that the only point of contention right now?
As far as I've seen, yes. Unless there was anybody else had any comment on this. I think I got everything else in that we talked about last time. This is, I had added the June thing myself, and then I wanted to mention Mr. McDevitt's comment. Otherwise, that's it.
So I would just notice that if we're not forming the committee until June 30th, and they have 60 school days to get it done, that could get us out into the middle of November, not recognizing people until December, which I think would be hard.
I think we could still form the committee in June and decide by October. So it says it, within 60 school days, right?
But I think you can call for nominations without the committee being...
Yeah, call for nominations, like, in April, and then just not look at them until the committee.
Right.
Because I agree, you want the teachers doing it.
I wonder if we wanna have, like, you know, I don't know if we would wanna have it in there somewhere, that, you know, our goal date to have this recognition would be in October.
Yeah, I was loose and said the fall, just in case somebody likes to do it at Thanksgiving, or, I don't know.
So remember, we do it with the PTS ceremony, so it's very dependent on me finding a date with Egan and us to recognize people who've gotten professional teacher status.
All right, so it can be nebulous. That's fine.
Yeah, but it is the fall. I mean, we shot for October last year.
I looked it up. I think it was the 26th last year. But do you think it would be, do I need to be explicit that the nominations are, we are accepting nominations starting April 1st, and nomination closes June 30th, and then the committee forms in mid-June, once there's a new chair, vice chair?
I think three months is plenty of time.
So, but I think it would be nice if we did say it opens in April every year, that just accept the nominations. Okay?
So for next time, you're gonna change it to Selection Committee, and then we need to resolve the last issue of how many per year?
So do you suggest, I think I can just leave it as "no more than three for now," and then discuss this with, or do you want me to change that to two?
Well, do you have any passion or feelings?
I don't have that, either way. I think it's, I do see Mr. McDevitt's point. We've had eight in eight years, and then we could potentially have nine in three years. That is a big increase. But just because it says "no more than three," doesn't mean we have to select three.
Exactly. That's correct.
Is the fear that, just because we get that many nominations, we'll always do three every year, is that... I mean, I think it's important that we allow a discretion if there's...
I don't wanna speak for him, because I don't know the motivation, but also, I think because we've added the fact that we will keep the applications for future, then it...
Well, I would suggest maybe that you circle back, because you have a little subcommittee between the three. And I think, I'm guessing, the will of this body is to say, maybe two per year, no more than two per year.
Okay, so I can change that, but, and then we can...
And then we can have that teed up.
Mr. McDevitt can speak in. Okay, so I can change that to two. All right. Is that all right? Okay, thank you.
We will tackle that, and thanks again for your work on that.
Of course.
Okay. New business, first reading, increase to FY '17 revolving account budgets. I'm assuming that's Mr. Mealy, or no?
No, it is Mr. Mealy.
It is Mr. Mealy.
So at this time, every year, we usually need to make an adjustment to the revolving accounts, because they're based on activity. If we have less activity than anticipated, we don't need to make a change. But when we have more, the school committee has to approve any increases to spending out of the revolving account. We actually have three this year that have seen more activity than expected. Community programs, Rick Alott, as I've said in the past, does a great job and just keeps adding programs. And when he does, he increases revenue, but he increases expenses, and you can see the need to increase different lines totaling $195,095. So that's community programs. Transportation, we've seen an increase as well. We did have to add a bus this year, so we wouldn't anticipate spending a whole hundred thousand, but just in case, we're asking for an increase of $100,000 in that revolving account. And then, the last one is food services. Erica has indicated that there are some items she was holding off on, new equipment that she wanted to purchase, but wanted to make sure she had generated the revenue for the year, and she has done that. So has asked me to increase her, have her budget increased by $60,000, so she can make those purchases.
So, Mr. Mealy, for the new members, can you just explain, just go kinda up a little bit to understand, these are funds that are places where we take in money, and then the school committee actually has to authorize us being able to spend the money. So it's not about us asking for additional funds. It's really just asking us for authorization to spend what has come in.
To spend what has come in. That's absolutely right.
Just so that, because I think it can get confusing about what these are, because it's the spending that we have to authorize, you have to authorize as a committee.
So what happens with the surplus at the end of the budget year?
It carries over.
To this revolving?
It stays right in that revolving account. Actually, of these three, two of them act as enterprise funds, completely independent of the school department. They fund themselves completely, including any benefits that have to be paid to employers. They fund themselves completely, including any benefits that have to be paid to employees.
That's fantastic, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And one other question, so you added a bus, was that mid-year or?
No, it was right at the beginning of the year.
Because so many kids or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, increased riders.
If you remember, it was the sergeant bus that was taking a very long time.
Oh, yes, I do.
And we got lots of complaints and we handled it by adding a bus.
Very good.
Just bringing back those-
I, I, I actually, I got personal contacts from friends about that, so I do remember.
So, it's first reading.
That's very helpful.
Any other questions on that one?
Why, I just wanted to, I saw this in the, the budget last week, too. Why did electricity jump up so much?
It actually, that's a good question. It didn't jump up. We have the ability to charge back community programs because they use the schools. And because they were paying the payment, almost like a mortgage payment, the loan for the modular construction because they were located over there. So, they helped actually purchase the modular classrooms over the Kittredge. And la, last year was the last payment. And so, in order to keep the rates where they were and not have to increase them, we didn't charge back for the utilities that we could. And now that they finished, we can do so. So, that's why that electricity and heating are in there. Yep?
So, it's just a way for us to support the general fund if they can. They can contribute for the gas and electric that they use. But in some cases with, for instance, if they have other expenditures, the general fund covers it.
Okay.
So, that's just a first reading, so we'll adopt that next, next, next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine by the eighteenth, yes?